Okay. So, welcome. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. We are here on a more intimate conversation with City Council President Hanifa Shabazz. And this is where we not only talk about politics, but we talk about what it is to be a strong woman and the challenges on the backside. So, thank you for doing this interview. Thank you for allowing me into the beauty of your home, which I love, love all of your statues and your artwork and your plants. It's just a beautiful, beautiful home. Thank you. So, let's go backwards. Before we start from the present, let's go backwards a little bit. I know you from feeding the community. When I think about your food, I get hungry because I really loved it. And you fed us knowledge. And so, what was that like? What, what, how was that coming in Wilmington and you go to start this food business and start the bookstore? Was that a tough time?
Well, no. Um, when we started the bookstore, at first I was still working in corporate. I was working at an international trade at what's now known as AstraZeneca ICI. And of course, just like anytime working in corporate America, you hit that glass ceiling. And I hit that glass ceiling. And the bookstore that Hanifa started was, was growing and prospering. And we knew that if with two, two of us working it, we could really make it work. So, I left, I left corporate and then dove straight into being in the business. Because I had the business mind, you know. So, I did the back office work and Hanifa did the book store work. And then as we, you know, started the bookstore, we started vending. And that's when I really got a chance to see something outside of Wilmington, to see just how the culture was celebrated other places. And seeing how other people were celebrating our culture. I said, "We had to do the same thing here in Wilmington." So, then I came back and I started the African Festival. And we, we did it for about three or four years before we really incorporated it to a nonprofit. Because I knew that in fact, Division of Arts and some of the legislators at that time, Ted Blunt and author Scott, Gary Hutt, they were council members. And they, they were saying, "If you, you know, are a nonprofit, we can help you build this." So, Hanifa looked up how to start a 501(c)(3). So, I sat down and Hanifa, I went away for a weekend and we put our head down and I wrote the paperwork and came back and floated in the African Festival and Parade Committee 501(c)(3). So, as we continue to do that, you know, like in any festival, you have to find a economic engine. What's going to, other than the vending cost? And so, we decided to start selling fish. Everybody wants what? Fish sandwich at the festival?
Right.
So, I started selling fish and then I start seasoning it a certain kind of way. And so, a friend of mine who was helping out, a girlfriend of mine was helping me out. She said, "Girl, you're gonna go crazy putting all the different season on one at a time. Just dump the stuff in a bucket and shake it one time."
Right.
So, we did. And that's how I created the gunpowder, the seasoning for the fish. I never really wanted a restaurant. I just had a product. I am a, you know, an entrepreneur. And when you have a product and you have a demand, as we did with the fish, then you work it. And so, I built Hanifa's kitchen because there was a demand for the food.
Did you face a lot of oppositions? I mean, a woman, well, you had your husband's backing because he's a man. But did you, as a woman, have to face a lot of challenges being an entrepreneur?
Well, as a single woman, I did more than there with, you know, when, when it was, you know, us as a couple. Because at that time, when we were, when we were becoming business owners, there was a rash of all of us at one time. There was, in fact, it was at least fifteen or twenty black businesses. It all started at the same time.
Okay.
And we put our energy together and had a Black Business Association.
Okay.
There people was on, I mean, Wall Street Alley was part of it. There were several different corner grocery stores. There was electrician, there were construction people. We were all. So, we, we were a coalition of black businesses working together. So, whatever struggle we had, we had it together.
Yeah. And that makes it easier.
It make much, much easier. And we all lasted about twenty years together.
Wow, that's good.
Yeah. In fact, I'd never forget. We was all trying to get together too. Because even some of the, the business persons were black owners of oil trucks. That's, then we used to do oil for your housing.
Right, right.
So, we, we would talk with them. We were trying to think, "What can we do collectively?" And we were talking to, because I was in international trade background. We were talking to people from Africa to ship oil over. We was trying to get one of the big containers so that our black old men, who deliver all heating oil to people's houses, would not have to buy from another party. We was gonna have our own and, you know.
That's amazing.
But we couldn't find a, we couldn't find a container. Because at that time, diamond oil down here was closing down. And we couldn't find a holding spot to hold that much oil.
But you got to that point of it and simply just didn't have a place to put it?
We, we did that and we were doing, we were looking, we were even trying to buy product together. Because what we don't understand is like the different foreigner stores, they, and this is how we found out, because we did start a grocery store also to 24th and Lamont.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah. We had, we had a grocery store for a short period of time there. But the community wouldn't cooperate and give us the zoning because they said, but you know how we, but they left the, we left the Koreans at the corner, had that little nasty Chinese store. But they wouldn't let us have a grocery store 24th and Lamont, you know. We just, that's the hardships.
Was that, was that based on the color of your skin, you think?
It was black people on black people.
Okay.
It was, it was, it was our community said they, because we had to get a zoning to change, the zoning for the corner store to be a, to serve hot food. Because we was putting Hanifa's kitchen back there also. But it was a grocery store. We bought fresh vegetables and fresh meat. And the thing about it, Michelle, was so deep, is that we put lights on that corner. The brothers that worked in the store wore white shirts and booties every day. So that the brothers could see our men in proper form.
Yes.
Okay. And again, I stood in the back and the men were up front. And they were, they were mentoring some of the young brothers in the street.
Yes.
And we licked that 24th and Lamont up, corner up, and we kept it clean. And, but we had to get a zoning change. And so, the elders didn't want us to have them, "You gonna have some fish mail and you gonna have trash." And they would not, they would not agree on our zoning. Our own people, our own neighborhood people in 24th and Lamont would not. We would have had a grocery store, fresh meat, fresh vegetables, fresh fruit, fresh homemade sandwiches. And we couldn't get a zone. I'll never forget that. Because after the meeting that the, the white zoning board said, "I don't believe in this day and time that I'm sitting here as a white man and I'm having to make this, talk to two, I'm gonna have to make this decision about black against black." It was just embarrassing. So, what we did is we locked the doors and never went back.
That is embarrassing.
We, we locked the doors and never went back.
That's very embarrassing.
But we did have, you know, but so, that's some trials that we had.
Right.
Trials that we had. But being a, being a business person, you're gonna have trials and tribulations because it's just hard.
Yes.
One of the things that we found as a small Black Business Association was that we were in business for ourselves for like five to ten years. And we couldn't find a funding agency to give us any money to get to the next level. So, we was already past five years. So, we didn't hit fit the microloan program. But, and we didn't, of course, you know, you rob Peter to pay Paul. So, you got some scars on your credit.
Right.
And they considered that a way that we, that we didn't qualify for any funding. So, that was when I really started my advocacy, the saying that this is really ridiculous. Because as long as a license been on for ten years and you're gonna tell me that all of y'all have your, everything is paid up and you don't have any bad marks on your credit. So, that's when we really started advocating.
So, that was the kickoff for you, for advocacy?
Advocacy for, for, for Black Business in, in the community.
Wow. And so, at some point, life makes another twist and turn. And you become a single woman. And how does that, how does, what does that look like?
How do I look, girl? What do you mean, how do I look like? Life has times and cycles. And people come into your life for seasons and reasons, you know? And so, evidently that season was up and it was time for me to do something different and do something more. So, I then got involved in, I had Stephanie T. Bolden, you know, I love her, my big sister. She encouraged me to go after the seat because the seat was open.
The seat for city council?
City council was open.
Okay.
And I was looking for transition and what to do, you know?
Right.
And so, talked to my neighbors here, well, at that time I lived in Newcastle Avenue. And Winston Troy, God bless his soul. There were some children coming down the street on a Sunday and I was out gardening. And they were very nine children with, and they was no more than seven or eight years old, with two white boys, like sixteen to seventeen. And I seen them beckoning more the children coming. I'm like, "Well, who are they?" Then I'm thinking, "Maybe they going to camp." But then it says Sunday. So, who are these two blond white boys in South Bridge gathering up our children and walking away with them? So, first I wasn't gonna say to them because I'm thinking it was camp. But then I said, "If I don't say something, something happened to these kids, I never forgive myself."
Right.
So, I go across the street to them. I said, "Excuse me, children, are you okay?" They said, "We're fine. We going to the park." So, I said, "Well, who are you?" So, he asked me who was I. I said, "Son, you in my neighborhood."
Right.
"And these are my children. These are all your children. Don't they look like me?" Little sassy little, in my neighborhood, okay?
Right.
So, they said, "Well, we, we came from a church. You go to church?" I said, "Listen, I ask the questions. I wanna know who you are, where you taking these children." They came from a church from the north Wilmington and they were around at Albert Park. And they were giving like free clothing and hot dogs. And they was told to go out and gather children.
Okay.
So, I said, "Well, where's your permission? Where's your ID?" You know, they said, "We were told to go gather children." So, I asked the young boy that was on the porch, "Go around here and tell me what's going on." And he went around and he said, "Yes, that's what they were doing." I said, "Well, walk these children around the corner."
Yes.
Well, Winston sees me talking to these young man and he comes down and asks me, "Everything okay?" So, I tell him what's going on. Well, I was living. Because I said, "How do we allow some strangers to come into our neighborhood and grab our kids for free hot dogs?"
Yeah.
For free. Do, so I just.
Could be taking them to a van somewhere, which is.
That's all I could picture. That's all I could picture. Our children disappeared. Remember Atlanta?
Yes.
Okay. So, I said, "I'm going to civic association meet. I'm going to scream and yell." And Winston said, "That's why you need to run." I said, "Oh, go ahead." He said, "That's why you need to run because we need a voice like yours." So, he planted the seed in my hand and I tell him, "I think about it, think about it." And I talked to my family, you know, and I talked to some friends. And of course, Stephanie was, "I got you. I helped you. I da-da-da-da-da."
Right.
You know? And so, I made the decision. But before Winston could see anything, he, he was suffering from brain, from brain cancer. And he never got a chance to see any of the paraphernalia and he passed away before.
Okay.
So, my work is, is driven by the spirit of Winston Troy, you know.
Because he sees you from wherever he is.
He does, yes. And I named the park, I renamed the park after Winston Troy Park on the corner. Because Winston was, you know, he was in a twelve, twelve program. And, you know, "One step at a time" is all he would say.
Yes.
You know? And he helped so many people transition. And so, I renamed this park Winston Troy because that was my, you know, that was what my heart back to him.
Okay.
So, that's why I got into public service.
So, here we go. We fast forward. Now you're sitting in the seat. Let's take it to the very first day that you ever actually sat in the seat of a city council president. Like, what, what were you feeling and thinking and like, you know, how did you feel?
I was like, "How do I do this? I don't know what I'm doing. I don't know." What, you know, I didn't know what I was doing. So, my first term, I never said anything because I didn't know what to say.
Right.
It was so much to learn.
Yes.
You know, I already knew the community. Fourth District is East Side, South Bridge. West, didn't know as much about West Center City. And then Midtown, Brandywine Trinity, I didn't know that population there.
Okay. This is before president. This was when you were city council.
City Council, Fourth District.
Okay. All right.
So, you know, you had to get to know them. And not, and not just know the area, you need to know the people.
Yes.
So, that meant going to their meetings, you know, the civic meetings and listen to the issues and concerns. And if anybody, everybody, every committee, community issues was different.
Yes. Yeah, well, that makes sense.
Was different. So, you have Quaker Hill. You had to get to know those individuals. And it was, it was very mind-boggling. Because remember, city council is a part-time job.
Yes.
You still got to do something else to, to live.
Bread and butter.
Bread and butter, okay? And so, it took, it was a lot of time. Because all of those meetings and keeping all those things straight and responding back to all those calls was very, very taxing, but very, very rewarding. You know, to know that, you know, there was one lady, one neighbor from Church Street called me because an elder's house, her back room had fallen in. And she was living in a house that was, that was full of clutter. She was a hoarder.
Yeah.
She was living in the living room with a portable toilet and an refrigerator because she couldn't get to the rest of the house. And then the back of the house had fallen in. You could see the opening. And she was living like that.
That's not good.
And she wouldn't let anybody in because she only let me in after the red neighbor told her that I was okay. Because she had her gun sitting right there. She said.
Really? What's she gonna do with the gun?
Well, she, because she was protecting herself. She said, "Have somebody come into her back." She said, "People was coming to steal her stuff." And she was, had to protect herself. So, I had to befriend her.
Yes.
So, she trusted me.
Yes.
And so, I would go visit her, see how she was doing and visit and came and won her confidence. And so, we end up getting her out of there, moving her to Ingleside. Because I worked on the, the senior program at Ingleside Homes. We had, there's a program where seniors can get help and people volunteer and construction people and LNI inspectors to help seniors fix their house up. And I was on that board.
Good.
And so, my relationship with the lady at Ingleside Home helped me get her in there. And she's now safe.
Good.
So, that, I mean, those kind of things, that kind of helps.
I'm sure you have lots of stories like, how long, like that? How long did you stay on the Fourth District before you went into the council presidency?
Twelve years.
Twelve years.
Three terms.
Three terms.
Twelve years. I served for twelve years.
And so, what was that pivotal moment that said, "I'm gonna run for the, for the top seat"?
Well, I mean, I, I did have so much of a plan, okay? My, my campaign platform is based on four E's. And I felt, and their four E's are E, education, economics, envi- um, excuse me, education empowerment, economics and environment.
Okay.
So, I felt that if I educated, I found that there was different levels of organization in the different neighborhoods.
Right.
So, if I could educate those less organized organizations to, what their power was and being organized, then that empowered them to want to do something more for their community.
Yes.
And then, of course, being able to identify where the economic resources are to be able to get it done would enhance their environment and quality of life. So, that's my four E's. So, before I left, by the first term, we had been, had an organi- we had them organized. By the second term, they all had a written community development plan. South Bridge was called SAM, Special Area Management Plan. East Side was Blueprint, which has grown into East Side Rising. And West Center City was, is now was West Center City Futures. So, each one of my more low-income neighborhoods had a written community economic development plan on paper.
Nice.
And so, by my third term, they were into implementation. So, I felt that I had done what I could for the Fourth District in getting them to, to evolve to the next level. Because Midtown was already self-sufficient.
Right.
Trinity was self-sufficient.
Right.
Christian Landing was self-sufficient. My East Side, West, South Bridge and West, they, but they now are all self-sufficient. Because they have a community base written down with facts and figures and data on what they saw they want their community to do, their, their community to become. So, in order for me to help them take it to the next level, I needed to go to the next level.
Okay.
So, then that's when I went for the president of city council. So that I could then best help them to bring their community plans to fruition.
So, in empowering, you know, other communities and you're doing all of this and you're still trying to live your life and you're working and you're doing all these things.
You're gonna have your life when you're in public service.
Yeah.
There is done. Your life is your service.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that, and that's not something I recommend anybody do. I recommend that you try to learn how to do it with a balance. But it is very difficult to do if you're gonna do it well. Because you are making a major sacrifice. And I wanna say, my children, I've sacrificed a lot for my children. You know, I have two beautiful daughters and five fabulous grandchildren and the most scrumptious two great-grandbabies you ever wanna see, you know? And so, there's some things that I missed out on in their lives because I am being, you know, the, this public servant, you know? But the, you know, and I won't say a "but," and, you know, I pray that it has just definitely been an example to them of what doing for others looks like and getting the just, you know, the just return.
So, so it is a large amount of sacrifice. And, and men, we live in a world where there's lots of manpower. Did you find yourself at odds or having to put on the boxing gloves often with men? You're a woman. You're a black woman, okay? And we live in a world with very powerful white men. So, what did that look like for you?
Well, I experienced it. I think every, all, my careers have always been that of a man field. But I worked in corporate America. I was in international trade. I'm, I'm a licensed custom house broker, okay? The only other licensed custom house broker in the state of Delaware is a white male. So, that industry was always white males. And I used to have to go to Washington for meetings and I would be the only woman and person of color in the room. So, I had sixteen years' experience of dealing with that. And then I think my teachings also of Islam gave me a very strong footing as to who I am as a black woman. So that, you know, the level of intimidation is not as much. But if you can't help but feel some levels of intimidation as well as feel the oppression that you are because you, not only just a black woman, but I'm a black Muslim woman.
Yes. Yes.
So, yes, I've, I've seemed to, in my life, been, always seemed to be a pioneer, someone to be the first to do things. I mean, and I, I take that as a blessing.
Yes.
And always keep in mind that the pioneer who does it first, everybody says, "I wanna be the first to do it." But the hard thing about being the first is you get the arrows in your back.
Yes.
And, and the bruises on your head from breaking down the walls. And you have to build the road.
Yes.
To travel.
Yes.
And then once you break the wall down and build the road, everybody else travels very nicely behind you.
Yeah.
And you don't get any recognition that you built that road. Because people just say, "Oh, so I was, I know the road was already there." But somebody had to build that wall. We rose. Somebody had to knock that wall down. But I don't do it for the prestige. I get it to get it done.
Yes. I think I, I can agree with you on that wholeheartedly. So, now, fast forward, we are in the city council presidency.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm sure you still, I mean, you have quite a level of, of power and authority by sitting in that seat. And there are some people who would rather take that seat from you or be elected into that seat. And they think that they can do a better job than you. And so, what do you say to those people that would, that would accuse you of not being coherent to the charter but wanting to do it your own way? What do you, what do you say to those people?
Take me to court.
Take you to court?
Take me to court. Tell me and tell me where I have violated the charter. This chance record. Tell me what my actions and what I've done that violate the charter. Because, and then, then let that answer whether I have or is it their misinterpretation of the charter.
Okay. Yeah. And some folks say you're the boss lady. It's, it's Hanifa's way or no way. What do you say to that?
I say that I try my best to follow the code, the charter and the constitution. If you are not, then it is my responsibility as the presiding officer to, to, to address your out-of-orderness. If you can't take my out-of-orderness and I have to be a little stern. When men are stern, they are aggress, they are aggressive. And, but when women are, we're angry black women.
Yes.
So, I.
Or the, or the female dog word.
Yeah, yeah, whatever. But I, I mean, I knew that was coming. I know, because it goes par for the course.
Yeah.
I mean, Jim Baker used to cuss people out. He used to, when he was president mayor, he was called stupid council. He would call us all kinds of names. No one mocked at that man. No one said a word to him. When I say you're out of order because you haven't been recognized or you're talking against the agenda, which is a full year violation, I'm being mean. So, it's par for the course. I know that I'm a woman in a man's world. I know that some men have very hard times in taking instructions for women. And so, I just deal with it. But I am very proud of my conduct. And no, I'm not proud of my conduct sometimes. Because sometimes I really wish that I would roll the neck a little more. There's the times when I really wanted to roll the neck a little more and really be more assertive in my talk. But the reason that I don't, and some people say, "Hanifa, you just let them jump." And it's funny how you say that. Because some people say that I'm not assertive enough. It's because they're watching me. Them young girls are watching me. And they, and, and there, and there's others who are waiting for me to roll my neck. There's others that are waiting for me to come off like the angry black woman. So, they can call me that B.I.T.C.H. I will not do that.
And for the young girls that are watching and even that may see this video, this post, because I've certainly asked everyone to please share this video with the young girls to empower them. I would ask you, for all that you've been through, what can you say to the little black girl that somebody has told her, "She's like Oprah Winfrey. You too fat, you too black, you too ugly. You'll never make it." Because that's what someone told Oprah Winfrey. They said she was fat, black and ugly and that she would never make it. What do you say to those girls?
I said that you're, you're voluptuous and you're gorgeous and you can be whatever you wanna be. You know, I mean, we have been, we, as black women, we've been told that we've been everything other than what we are. But everybody works to be and look just like us. They look to have that skin. I mean, women sit, sit in the sun and burn themselves trying to get to our color.
Yeah.
They do their hair to have the fullness of it. They, they stick silicone in their lips and now they're getting injections in their.
Lipo.
So, you know, come on. Haters, you know, learn to love yourself. When you can look in the mirror at yourself naked and love every lump you see, then it's nothing anybody can tell you. And that's the first lesson I tell anybody to say.
I need to learn that for myself.
I'm serious. I mean, you, because you, this is who, this is who God made you be. And if you wanna change it, you don't like the, to the fullness of it, then work out.
Change it.
Change it. Do something about it. What you like is change it. But don't denounce yourself. Denounce yourself. Because like you said, some, I have girlfriends that say, "Girl, I wish I had on them hips." You know?
Yes.
So, we're never satisfied.
Right.
It's, it's just getting satisfied with stuff. That's why we color our hair. We didn't satisfy the color of our hair, right? We put colors in our eyes. We put lashes. We've changed the color of our lips. We're not ever satisfied. So, when can you stand just raw and unapologetically look at yourself and say, "I love myself. I love that bump on my nose. I love that crack in my tooth. I love that, you know, that, that fullness in my hips." When, when you can do that, there's nothing anybody can say. There's nothing you can't do. Because it's, you, you, you're fully, "I am woman. Hear me roar."
Oh, my God. You're empowering me. You're empowering me. And I know the little girls are empowering. You're empowering me. So, I, I wanna close this interview out with, with, with the question of the night. And so, with all of your resume that you've shared with us tonight, if someone else is voted into that seat, what happens to Hanifa Shabazz?
Oh, girl, Hanifa got a whole nother. I got a list of things to do. Understand, this is not my seat. I'm here because the people of Wilmington put me here. And if the people of Wilmington want me to stay here, then on September fifteenth, they will vote me in. If they don't, it be the will of Allah that he has something else planned for Hanifa. I mean, I, I have done a bookstore, art gallery, newspaper, restaurant, African Festival, public service. Girl, my list continues to go on. So, this, it'll just be another life and cycle for Hanifa.
Yes. Plus, you get to smooch on that, that scrumptious great-grandbaby.
Yes, yes. I go to the police with my sister. I mean, it's just, you know, then that means that my time is up and that for, and I, and I'll be grateful for allowing me to be served for the sixteen years that I've served. I pray that I have left seeds that, and planted trees that are still flourishing and people are eating from, that I put processes in place by which whoever takes this seat can continue to run the city of Wilmington and continue to make it grow. Because Wilmington is on a, is on a, is on a trajectory of, of great success. And I would hate to see it not continue moving into drifting. And I'm really concerned that, that my constituency, those who are, are not practicing the four E's, who don't have the, are not organized, are not involved and are waiting for they to do something for themselves, or they to do something for children, or they to give them a job, that they don't wait too long, that they do self, that, you know, my goal is to try to make us self-sufficient. Government's supposed to serve you, not be your dictator and provider of all things.
Yes.
You know? Because that's really a way back to slavery, yes.
Waiting for something from the master's table.
Just take the cast of table. More police officers to help us to rule our kids. Why are we wanting officers to police our children? I don't want the policemen to come after my sons.
What happened to us as a village raising the children? Why, why will the mom be mad at me and wanna fight me if I discipline her child for doing something inappropriate?
Well, we have, because we, we have allowed by not being engaged in our, in our, in so-called politics. And we have allowed someone else to make policies of how we, how we are to do things. So, we're getting back involved in the political system. We need to go back down the door and say, "I want the ability to, to discipline my child." All of us who knew we got our hearts whipped. are not, are, there's nothing mentally wrong with us, other than we know there's certain things we may not do, but our momma's give us that look.
That's right.
So we, we lost our rule of measure of how we um collectively as a collective people. There's just some things that in the other nationalities, like in the Italian, there's certain things you just don't do in the Italian community. And in the Jewish or in the Hispanic. We don't have those kind of things. We used to. We used to have certain things that you just did not do, like, you did not sit in the living room when adults was talking.
That's right.
You did not call an adult by the first name. You know?
You did not get in a conversation when adults were talking. You did not talk back to them.
You did not cuss in front of an elder. There was just certain things that you just did not do. Um and we have to get back to those respectful things um and bring back the morality and home training that we once lost, cause now we don't have control of our children. I mean, I
Can we save them? Is there anything we can do to save them?
We have no choice but to save them, because if we don't save them, they're not gonna save us. So if we just think it's somebody else's issue, it's not. Our babies are dying in the street right now, okay? Um I, an eleven-year-old girl got shot the other day. We had a six-year-old baby get shot in here the other day. Um the the cops are still, wh- what are we waiting for? I wanna know, what are we waiting for? How come we're not in an uproar that immediately we need to do something? Why are we not policing our streets and taking these guns out of the children's hands? The first few was eighteen, nineteen, twenty-year-olds. We're talking fifteen, eleven-year-old kids that got guns. What do you mean? What are we? What are we waiting for?
So many adults are afraid of the children. Like, I've been in with people, yeah, but I've I've been with other adult friends and we've seen young people misbehaving and they're like, you better not say nothing to them or they might shoot you.
Have you ever heard of any of these children shooting an adult who was reaching a loving hand to a child? Out of all these shootings, has it ever been in a child shooting an adult and said, baby boy, let me come, let me, what can, what can I do for you? Baby girl, how can I help? You've never heard of a child shooting an adult who reached out to them with love. Let's try reaching out to them with love. Baby, can I help you? Don't say, put him down, pants up. Girls, look at you. Baby boy, I I I constantly talk to young people. Baby boy, hey, hey, put your pants up, baby. I wanna see you under. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Try it, people, try it. Talking to our children with love. With love.
You're an amazing woman. You're absolutely amazing and everything that you've been through is just phenomenal. Like, I I have the greatest level of respect and love for you.
Go back a way back, girl.
Yes, I know, we do, right? I tell you this much, when I was in that organization with that group of women, one of the things that the elders made sure of was that we always showed respect to our elders and that we worked as a community. And that that's the one thing, I feel that we have lost some of that um in our communities.
I love you, sister.
I love you even more. I love you sisters. I look forward to us, I mean, I, it's it's gonna take us, us women.
It's gonna take us women to pull in together and saying, we're not taking this anymore. The school system might get away, our kids is hap- happening with our children. We need to come together and say, this is what we need for our children. Listen, the state got three hundred and some odd, no, the county got three hundred some odd million dollars. And the state got seven hundred million dollars due to COVID, okay? Where's all that money? I know, I mean, I know it's been spent and I'm not questioning that, but I'm saying, if this, our quality of life is due to COVID, then that money belongs to help us in our, in our relief of it. But the question is, what is our ask? What, what do we, what do we want?
I don't, I don't know enough about politics, but I can say this much. I want to see, I would like to see our children safely return to school, simply because I've noticed, as a former high school teacher, I've noticed, with the kids not having school and community centers, they're picking up guns and they're doing, they're just ripping and running till twelve and one o'clock in the morning.
Okay, so if that's the situation and we can't because of COVID, we're concerned about the virus, we are smart enough and we can get together and figure out, then let's do something else, okay? But the question is, what is that else? And I, as innovative, this, I mean, our our parents, our our ancestors made nothing, something out of nothing when they were enslaved. So for us to have all the resources and the gadgets we got, that we can't come up with another educational system for our children, I don't believe that. We're much more educated, we got much more money, we got much more technology. I know that we, but the problem is, we just gotta sit there and say, this is what we going to do. And this is what, in a collective voice, to resolve this. And not leave it for somebody else who doesn't have our best interests at heart all the time. They're worried about their own self, their own children. Our children need something different. So I'm challenging our women, let's get together, put our heads together and resolve and come up with initiatives that's gonna make sure our children get a good quality of education in this virtual world that we're in. I don't believe that we don't have an answer. I just think we just have to sit down.
I am more than willing to knock on doors of every woman that is in the community and tell her to come on out and, you know, and and uplift herself, because you can't uplift the kids until the mom is kinda straightened out. Mom and grandmom need to be all right.
It's the family. It's a practice called community restoration practices that 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 we are, that I just came across this new best practice, that we definitely wanna in um incorporate into the community. Trying to educate the community on how we can restore ourselves back to that, yes, ma'am, no, ma'am, that respectful thing. Having a agreed-upon rule of measure, having some family values, having some, um you know, just um of family practices. We have got to get back to that. And so some incidents that occur, where we have these disputes with our young men, that they, only they know how to do is to deal with it with the gun. We can teach them conflict resolution. Sit down and say, let's talk this out. And when you talk it out, you come to find it, man, I just was pissed and I, and I, and you just, you got me at the wrong moment. And I got a wrong moment and then my boy tried to chomp me and I couldn't even chomp me, so all you got to do was, back in the day, we used to punch you in the face. Nowadays, they blow you away. And you can't take that back. Then it's a man, I I killed my best friend over a moment.
And it's like, one's going to the jail and one's going to the ground.
Right, and so we have to stop that. We have to stop that. So I think we can do it.
I believe we can too. We just have to pull together. I'm I'm all in. Whatever I can do to be of assistance, let me know. I'll knock on doors and tell people to come on and come on and be a part of it. You have been watching a a personal and intimate interview with city council president Hanifa Shabazz. But we gonna leave off the city council president and just say, you've been sitting here chilling and talking and vibing with Queen Hanifa. So I thank you so much for this interview. I thank you, the the audience, for tuning in. I appreciate you and stay with us for the entire month of September, where I will be highlighting strong and empowered black and just strong women within the state of Delaware. So thanks for tuning in. And we're gonna finish our conversation and I'll clue you in later. Thanks, everybody. Good night.